Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council for Tuesday, May 10, 2022. Meeting announcements. All council meetings will be livestreamed on the city website and the City Channel, Pittsburgh YouTube channel. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross.
Here.
Mr. Kraus.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle.
Here.
Mr. O'Connor.
Here.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Kill Smith, President.
Here.
Eight members present.
Thank you. As we join from our remote locations and in person, please join us. Rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend the agenda?
The move.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The agenda is amended. The next order of business is proclamations, and we have two proclamations. One, Councilwoman Gross, Councilwoman Coghill, I was going to do ours first, but I didn't realize the mayor was going to be present for this one. Let's start with the mayor, and mayor, if you remain standing, if you remain here for the next pro, we'd appreciate that, too. We have Councilwoman Gross for a joint proclamation with Mayor Ganey.
Come on up for our proclamation for SNAP benefits. Come around. I want to thank the mayor for being here as well for this very, very important topic. We're here today to talk about the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program. Whereas pre-pandemic, 21% of Pittsburgh residents experienced food insecurity, meaning that over 60,000 residents struggle to have enough affordable, nutritionally beneficial, and culturally appropriate food to live a healthy, active life. And whereas in 2021, the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank reported that the region experienced a 42% increase in food insecurity since 2018, demonstrating the powerful effect of the pandemic on hunger. Whereas Feeding America estimates that one in seven children in the Greater Pittsburgh area face hunger. And whereas the city of Pittsburgh is committed to the United Nations Sustainable Development Goal Number Two of Zero Hunger and making Pittsburgh a food-secure city. Whereas the Feed Pittsburgh Report in 2020 outlines food insecurity within the city and identifies 23 healthy food priority areas for policy action. And whereas food assistance programs like the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program are the first line of defense in fighting food insecurity through proven methods that lift families out of poverty. U.S. Census data estimates that over 16,000 residents in the city who are below poverty level are not yet receiving SNAP benefits. And whereas the first cohort of the Pittsburgh Food Equity Ambassadors recommends that the city ensures all eligible residents are enrolled in SNAP by expanding existing enrollment programs and developing new initiatives to increase enrollment. And whereas the Department of City Planning, the Office of Community Health and Safety, and City Parks, along with the external partners from the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank, the Food Trust, the Allegheny County Department of Human Services, and Just Harvest, have collaborated on campaigns to increase SNAP enrollment. Whereas it is the start of our local farmers' market season, and through Just Harvest's Fresh Access Program, residents can use SNAP benefits at farmers' markets throughout the city. And whereas several markets provide further incentives for SNAP benefits, such as the Food Trust's Food Bucks program that increases SNAP dollars by providing extra dollars for fruits and vegetables. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby proclaim our commitment to reducing hunger and increasing food security of our residents. And be it further resolved, the Council of the City of Pittsburgh encourages residents in need to seek assistance through the SNAP program, the Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program. That's it. Madam President?
Can we have a motion to approve in a second?
The move. Sir, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Thank you, Councilwoman. Do you want the mayor to go next? Mayor Ganey?
You know, I always ask people, where would we be without SNAP? And how many families would be impacted if we didn't have a program that provided resources for families to eat? And so because of that, I want to say thank you. I want to thank you for making food insecurity one of your top priorities and ensuring that everybody has access to food. And as we continue to go on, particularly in a moment of war, you know, we don't know what the future looks like. We know the supply chains are, right now, everywhere are caught up. But I do believe in the human heart, and I do believe in the human people. As long as we continue to make it a priority to ensure that our neighbors have food, our neighbors have food, then we'll continue to grow as a region. So I just want to simply say thank you for the work that you put in. Thank you for making sure that we feed Pittsburgh, and let's continue to grow together. Thank you.
My name is Lou DePlancher, and I've been working with Shelley Dinko Day in the Department of City Planning on this SNAP campaign. I just want to say thank you to Council, City Council, particularly Councilwoman Gross and her whole team, and also thank you to Mayor Ed Ganey and his whole team as well. We've been working with some incredible partners. We have a few of them here today. Laura and Tika are from Just Harvest, and Adam is from the Greater Pittsburgh Community Food Bank. Both of these places have resources where they can help people apply for SNAP, navigate that system and benefits, and also connect people with direct food assistance if they need it. So we thank you for bringing awareness to this. I personally feel the power of SNAP as it helped my family when I was little and helps me and many of my community members today. So we just wanted to raise awareness and make sure that we can all be connected to such a valuable resource. I also believe it's important to reject stigma that comes with public assistance as a city, and instead to stand behind people who are looking to get these resources that they truly deserve. So, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. You know, you hear a lot about Pittsburgh Public Schools, but you don't always hear the successes. And we know some of the schools have such successes, like Kappa Downtown. But a lot of people don't know about Pioneer. I hate to say this in Councilwoman Coghill's district, but I claim it, too. But I will just say, the Amazing Ava lives in my district. So together, we're going to do this joint proclamation. And if you know, if you know anything about Pioneer, it's an amazing school, so look into it, and you see the wonderful things that Pittsburgh Public Schools can do in that building. Councilman, you want to read the pro?
Oh, so you want me to read the pro?
Yeah, and then we're going to have Mayor Ganey say a few things and stand up.
Okay, well, you know, I just want you to know, I've been waiting for this day for three weeks now. I ask Madam President every week, is the Amazing Ava coming in this Tuesday? And I know we got waylaid there a little bit and had some delays, but finally, we've got the Amazing Ava here, folks.
And the mayor to share with the Amazing Ava.
What's that?
And the mayor is staying to share with the
Yeah, and Mayor Ganey is here. He wanted to be here, and a lot of people are excited about your visit, Ava. Of course, Ava is surrounded by a really good team. We have with us her mom, Lauren Price. Say hello, Lauren. We also have Cindy Zarchin, the author of The Amazing Ava, and Sammy, her teacher. So thank you all for being here. We really appreciate it. I didn't know she was going to make me read the pro, so let me
Oh, sorry.
I will tell you, I got the Amazing Ava book. I went out and bought it when I heard The Amazing Ava was coming. It's, I've already read it three times, so you know it's an easy read.
I want to
But it's much more than a book. It's actually a life lesson. And, you know, thank you all for all you mean to Ava, and Ava, thank you for inspiring many, so. Okay, whereas Ava Ellenberg, who is nonverbal and has cerebral palsy, performed her first dance recital on June 27, 2021, at the age of 12, while dancing to her favorite Disney princess songs, especially those featuring Elsa from Frozen. And Ava began dancing at Cynthia's School of Dance and Music in September of 2019. After a teacher, Samantha, known as Miss Sam, watched her reactions, and she gazed at Paisley. Paisley is Amazing Ava's older sister.
Younger.
Oh, I'm sorry, younger sister, right, dancing in class. With the support of Ava's mother, Lauren Price, Ava's father, Joshua Allenberg, and stepdad, Dave Price, Miss Sam consulted with physical and occupational therapists in creating routines suitable for Ava. And since then, Ava earned the nickname Amazing Ava because of the progress she has made. She loves to dress up in her dance costumes, and when she performs, Miss Sam turns Ava's wheelchair, allowing her to pirouette and glide across the dance floor, while her arms move through the air, often with assistance. And whereas the director and owner of the dance studios, Cindy Zarchin, wrote a book based on Ava titled Ballerina on Wheels, Amazing Ava's First Dance Recital, which was illustrated by Lana Lee and released on April 18 of this year. And whereas the book is about a young lady, Ava, who shows the world what is possible and makes a mark in society for her hard work, drive, and determination to live life at her fullest despite any physical limitations or obstacles thrown her way. Ava's mother believes this book will inspire children and adults with and without disabilities to believe in themselves and not let obstacles define them. And whereas Ava resides in the Banksville neighborhood of Pittsburgh and currently attends Pittsburgh's Pioneer Education Center located in Brookline. When she is not dancing, Ava enjoys watching the Pittsburgh Pirates and Pittsburgh Penguins and telling jokes using her communications device. I think I was the butt of one of those jokes this morning, wasn't I? Whereas Ava resides in, or I'm sorry, now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Ava Ellenberg for the inspiration that she is and commends Cindy Zarchin for authoring a book which supports the concepts of diversity and inclusion of children of all abilities. And be therefore it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, May 10, 2022, to be Amazing Ava Day in the city of Pittsburgh.
Can I have a motion to approve in a second?
The move. The move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Proclamations approved. Congratulations. And, Councilman, did you want to say a few words?
No, you know, I just wanted to say, you know, it really is an inspiring story. It's much more than a book. It's much more than a dance lesson. And Sam, thank you, you know, for you to start the ball rolling by saying, you want to join us to dance, you know, it really was, although it be brief, but really educational for beyond dance recitals, it's really a life lesson. So, three words that, you know, Doctors Zarchin asked us to describe, The Amazing Ava, you know, three that come to my mind is brave. Number one, it's really brave to take on something that nobody thinks you can do. You're a pioneer now, Ava, so you will be inspiring many other kids with disabilities to do, to not have any, you know, barriers, and courageous. And with all those combined, it's very inspiring, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. And I just want to also acknowledge, not Pioneer, I already mentioned, but also Dr. Zarchin, who was the principal in Pittsburgh Public Schools, and she started the dance school after retirement, correct? And so she can talk a little bit about that, but we're going to have Mayor Ganey come up first to say a few words, and then we'll get some photos with the mayor. So you really, you really pulled out the big names today, Ava.
You know what, I just want to say congratulations to The Amazing Ava. I agree with Councilman Coghill. Your story is inspiring. It demonstrates what can happen when you're surrounded with people who really love you and care and really want to see what's best for you. And just looking at the people that you have around you today, I already see why you're successful. So I just want to say congratulations, you got a book, you know, you've done, you've accomplished a lot. A book, you dancing, you doing it all. So from the mayor's office, we congratulate you, and may God continue to bless you.
Do you want to, Dr. Zarchin, do you want to say a few words?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Ganey, and thank you, Councilmen, our whole entire city council, and thank you, Madam President, for acknowledging Ava, not only for being a beautiful young lady, but for the amazing and talented ballerina that she is today. We are so very, very proud of her because she's not afraid to face new things. Nothing, nothing will stop Ava. As a matter of fact, what I say is Ava is one show stopper. When you see her on the stage, wherever you are, you will stop and just be amazed. And she's going to be dancing again onstage at the end of June at the Greater Masonic Temple, so we are proud, so move over, Pittsburgh. We bring you Amazing Ava.
Doctors Zarchin, do you want to tell people how they can buy the book?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, right, you can buy your own copy of Ballerina on Wheels, Amazing Ava's First Dance Recital. You can buy it on amazon.com, and please share it with your family, your friends, everyone, because it is the story of trying new things. It's the story of inclusion. It's the story of being brave. It is just a wonderful story for adults and children to read over and over again. And then let the world know, because we want to spread the news that we have Amazing Ava in Pittsburgh here, and she is on the move. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Council and everybody. My name's Lauren. I'm Ava's mom. I just want to thank you for having us here today to celebrate a beautiful girl who's inspired the world since day one. When Ava was born, she survived a pretty traumatic brain injury, and I know I can speak on behalf of her father and the rest of our family, when we knew surviving such a situation that she would do big things in her life. Little did we know that she would take a situation that most people would view as just sorrowsome, pity, and just use it to share her story and provide such an important message to the world about instilling self-confidence, not setting limits on one's life, what they may or may not be able to accomplish just due to, you know, a disability. From the time Ava was born, she always captured everybody's attention with those big blue eyes, the big smile of hers. She didn't allow for her wheelchair or the fact that she is nonverbal stop her from living her life to the fullest. In the fall of 2019, when Cindy and her staff had presented the opportunity for Ava to begin dance classes with Miss Sam, we knew this would be an enjoyable activity for her to participate in. So along with Achiva, we got her signed up to dance at Cindy's studio. At the time, Ava's younger sister, Paisley, danced there. What inspired the book, Paisley at that time, at the age of four, just asked a simple question of, how can Ava dance when she doesn't walk and is in a wheelchair? The question, it wasn't intended to be like rude or ignorant. She was four years old, just asking a pretty innocent question. So it then was a motivational factor for Cindy to write Ballerina on Wheels. She was able to take Ava's experience in dance and publish this story with the purpose of providing educational value to young children on inclusion and self-esteem. I wanted to also thank Cindy and Samantha for the opportunity to share Ava's story. It's been so great to watch Ava smile and be happy, getting the chance to participate in activities that other girls her age get to participate in. As her mother, I will forever be grateful for that, especially since from the time she was born, she was given a pretty grim outlook on the quality of her life. I wanted to also extend an extra special thank you to Miss Sam. Over these last couple of years, I've watched a sweet friendship blossom between you both. You both have such fun every Saturday, and you're incredibly in tune to her physical limitations and bring so much out of what Ava is able to do with ballet. We are excited to share this story with everybody and this message with various organizations in the city, schools, and even other dance studios in the area. Thank you for allowing us to do so.
Thank you. And now we're going to hear from Ava. And you, do you want to speak? And then Ava.
So I'm really, really grateful for the chance to be here today, and I just want to thank everyone for bringing us in and offering Ava and us all the opportunity here. And just the only thing that I really have to sort of reflect upon was, when I was little, I had a dance teacher tell me that I was born with that dancer's heart and dancer's blood. And I never became a dancer, and I know, right? It's silly. And I never became a dancer. I became a teacher and a dance teacher. And I became a dancer and a dance teacher. But I see that, what that teacher meant, and I see it in Miss Cindy. She's got that dancer's heart and that dancer's blood. And I see it in Ava. And I really appreciate Miss Cindy and this council for giving us the opportunity and giving Ava the opportunity to sort of continue our message that having a dancer's heart and having dancer's blood and being born a dancer doesn't look one way.
Thank you. Councilman, can you put the microphone over, down a little bit?
This one?
Yeah, you just have to bend it, or whatever. Yeah. Okay, thank you. They're using our portable phone, recording the meetings. It went to sleep. Okay. Remember where that purple button is? Go ahead to the purple button. Okay. Hit the purple button once.
I want to thank you for today's special honor. I am extremely thankful for Miss Sam for believing in me and helping me to become a A ballerina. Also, thank you, Miss Cindy, for giving me the chance to be able to dance and show the world that a wheelchair doesn't place limits to my ability. I hope that this book will inspire and share such an important message on inclusion. And lastly, thank you to my family, my Pioneer and Childs Way staff for always giving me confidence in every opportunity made available to me. Thank you.
Maybe you can be a speechwriter next. That was amazing. Thank you. Will everyone come up for the photo? And did you, did she want to do a performance or something?
Ava has a book she would like to present. It's an autographed book that she would like to present to City Council.
Ava, you're, some of us are like
So Teresa, if you'd like to accept the book.
And here's a proclamation. However, you all decide. You want Ava to hold the proclamation? Do you want to hold it? You want to hold it? Okay. Baseball. Yes, they are. Ava, check it out.
Mayor Ganey, come over here. Come here.
Come here. Hi, everybody ready? We just can't get back. Yeah, no. 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 We just can't get back. Yeah, no.
Thank you, Mayor Ganey, also, for staying with us for the morning, for the procs.
Can I drop them off? You don't have to drop them off. Can I drop them off? Want to say goodbye to everyone? Looking at the screen, bye. Ready? Want to say bye to everyone?
Thank you, mayor. Thank you.
Goodbye.
Goodbye.
Goodbye. I'll
Thank you. And our next order of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action, or deliberation, which are or may be before City Council. Threats and profanity will not be permitted. May we have the first speaker, please? And when you come to the podium, please state your name and neighborhood. For the record, you have three minutes to speak. And the first registered speaker is Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller. Dr. Miller?
Dr. Ronald Lynn Miller, Belsiver, Helsinki, Finland. Global Intelligence Society, U.S. National Candidate for the Presidency 2024. GlobalIntelligenceSociety.org, main FOCI, our vote-by-voter verification, signature-to-signature verification for nomination papers across the United States. In May, Week Two, for us, this is European Intelligence Month, very clearly identifiable in Finland, and we have a link with Helsinki. Concern of Pittsburgh City Council is housing. Reference is 2022-03-00 for the LEC idea. I reject this limited equity cooperative approach because non-constitutional equity is destructive in our view of U.S. Declaration of Independence and the United States Constitution concept of equality, ideal of equality. An emphasis on the primacy of ideology over a significant central U.S.-American ideal because of a minimum of arithmetic info intel regarding numbers of houses per district. And Ms. Gross still has not answered me about how many houses are actually in Lawrenceville because of non-max mathematization of housing value measurement variables and because of non-zero mathematica, logica, informing LEC operationalization principles. Finland is the number-one country in Europe on housing. They have a Housing First policy, which I like very much. It is a national and local policy, all focused on Helsinki. Housing first, they build houses for
Teresa, I agree with you that jobs are needed in the city. Those who wish to move out of the city should seek employment there. Mount Lebanon has paid firefighters. I also include teachers and police. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. First, do no harm. It is not just a rule of medicine. Government shall not harm the people or can be held accountable. Blockbusting and infliction of emotional distress has occurred against Bon Air. Those who oppose the property owners of Bon Air do so at their own peril. The Pennsylvania State Constitution says that government was created for the peace, safety, and happiness of we the people. Decisions and actions that harm the people are not acceptable. There are elected and appointed officials that have proven themselves to be enemies of Bon Air. That is not advisable. Mayor Ganey, Councilman Coghill, and State Representative Benham have all pledged to help Bon Air get rid of our detrimental school property and replace it with a green space. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space will be beneficial to all ages and stages of people, a beautiful, calming place to enjoy fruit trees, flowers, and birds. Will the rest of City Council promote the peace, safety, and happiness of the Bon Air neighborhood? We, the property owners, say no to anything other than a green space to replace the once valuable asset of the school that was closed against our will. Reapportionment is thoroughly rejected by we the people. Of Bon Air, there is no benefit to us, only harm. The answer is no. The Michael Mullen Memorial Green Space is a partial reparation for the injuries we have endured. Shady trees, not shady deals in Bon Air. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi. And our next registered speaker is Alexandra Nicola Gray. Is Alexandra online? Alexandra is not online. Millie Sasse. Millie Sasse.
My name is Millie Sasse. I've been a resident of Oakland for more than 40 years. Thank you for permitting me to speak in Opposition of Ordinance 2021-1906, and please send this legislation back to the starting gate. I have many concerns about 1906, both in process and content. This legislation should not be considered before the Oakland Plan is complete. It seems more than just a little bit odd to have one part of Oakland rezoning driven by a specific project, Walnut Capitals project, and then the rest of Oakland inherits that rezoning by default. That's not logical and has limited the public input in the process of what is to become the Oakland Plan. Version Two of 1906 was written by a council and chief of staff with strong input from a Walnut Capital lawyer. This was done with no public input. It was behind closed doors and was revealed only after it was complete. Seems wrong to me. Now we have version Three that supposedly builds on version Two but contains input for Planning Commission and Department of City Planning. How does one find the similarities and differences between version Two and Three? It takes hours to compare the versions line by line. Does the public get a list of omissions, additions, modifications of this 175-page document? I don't think so. At least, I haven't seen one, or maybe I just don't understand. But I question how the public is to provide meaningful questions and input with the knee-jerk procedure that has been used with this legislation. I believe there are problems with proposed lights and signage inherited from downtown, parking regulation decreased from the decreases already in place, with excessive heights and lengths of buildings, way too big and in conflict with existing neighborhoods, misleading plans for step-back and greenways. Definitions are odd to a layperson. I heard the City Planning ask for more intensive, two-dimensional drawings showing the difference between homes and proposed new buildings to illustrate the height differences. I don't see that in version Three. Was it forgotten, or did I just not find that in 176 pages? Now, affordable housing is limited to 35 years, which seems a little short to me. People are just settling into life when they will be tossed out of affordable units. Is Walnut Capital willing to adjust that limit to, say, 50 years, when somebody might be thinking about coming some kind of retirement accommodation? Oakland needs its own zoning, not inherited code from downtown, uptown, or other places. Please let that happen. At any rate, do not approve this legislation. Let Oakland Plan be vetted, discussed, argued, and only then should 1906 be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Elena Zaitsoff. Elena Zaitsoff.
Good morning, council members. I am Elena Zaitsoff. I've lived in South Oakland for 42 years. I am here today to talk about Ordinance 2021-1906, the Walnut Capital rezoning of part of Oakland. As we have learned the hard way about zoning in Oakland, what could be built with this rezoning has to be considered, not the pretty pictures we are shown. There have been many substantive changes to this bill. Residents are confused about the process, heights, loss of OPRD, and its protective residential compatibility being replaced by something called Height Reduction Zone. Inclusion of a piece of Zalima Park, a new green space category which can actually be a concrete path. Setbacks versus stepbacks, changing signage requirements in comparison to the Oakland Plan. These are some of the many details which are very important and require time and dialogue with everyone for a diligent review. Hybrid town hall meetings where true exchange can occur need to happen. The three minutes provided to citizens at the public hearing is not adequate, just done because it's legally required. Questions don't get answered, nothing gets explained, there's no back and forth. Where are the section drawings the Planning Commission requested? Not the ones in the presentation to the Planning Commission, but new ones they requested for you that were to show the height and massing the zoning would allow with respect to the surrounding neighborhoods. Do they exist? Have they been given to you? And if so, why haven't they been made public? Now that the bill has been given back to you, please plan a series of town hall meetings on it. Other town hall meetings have been held on issues having much less of a long-term impact on residents. The residents of Oakland deserve no less. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next speaker is Jeffrey Woodard. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Jeffrey Woodard. I'm a resident of Oakland. Wanted to make sure that everyone know that I'm running for the United States Congress for the 12th Congressional District here, which covers the entire city of Pittsburgh. I'm also a resident of Oakland and in favor of making sure that council take a good look before they make a decision on approving the Walnut Capital deal. When you indicate that there is low-income housing for residents and it's only going to be for 35 years, that's a short time period, having been and living in Oakland myself since 1993. I ask that the time be extended for many years and that it be a permanent thing instead of just a short time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And that exhausts our list of registered speakers. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address City Council? Ms. Brown?
My name is Yvonne F. Brown, and I live in the Hill District. I brought this to show you that my baby daughter, Unique, bought this for me. Isn't it beautiful? Now, I was laughing and joking with my other daughter, Yvonne, who's named after me, who I say is very special. Because I say, how did Nikki, how was Nikki able to tell these people how I look? She said, mommy, mommy, that's a planner. You don't look nothing like that. And I said, it was a joke, Vani, as I say she's very special. And I brought this just to show you because it is beautiful. She bought this up at the August Wilson's Gala that they had up on Beaufort. And if I get the number, I will bring the number in case someone would want some of these. Now, also, I want to explain this, that I heard that pit, the psychologists are going to look into these children that's coming from the war-torn zone and saying about their mental capacity. I think he needs to start with our Pittsburgh Public School children. My two grandchildren, the little one that was five, that came to Mr. Burgess, said that she had no reason or shouldn't be permitted to speak. She's now seven, and the other daughter is nine. They hate school. They hate school. But the only thing is this, they have a van driver named Ms. Betty. Ms. Betty makes their day. Ms. Betty had took on her birthday, had brought them treats. Now, the kids came and were saying, grandma, she gave us these, we have to do something for her. So I found a bracelet, a lighter, a flashlight, and a card. Ms. Betty, as we talked, used to work in Presby Hospital with their Aunt Claire Brown, who passed. When I told her that, she was saying, oh, yes, she knew Claire. Now, Claire was the one, my time is almost up, but she had ended up getting an award from the hospital where she saved them money, and they gave her an award of $49. That's years back. But I want you to know that we need to have our children in the public school to be tested by psychologists because they're suffering, and they shouldn't be. We are supposed to be able to teach them because they are our future, whether you know or not. I'm not going to be here that much longer, but my grandchildren will. And I don't bring them down because I don't want them to be insulted again because they're asking to come down and speak. And they know, they've been brought up coming down to speak. They know they can do it. And then you have Mr. Burgess to say he has no right. But yet, you can bring your white baby and sit. Ms. brought her white child, four months old, and sat all day long. But my baby can't come and speak? There's something wrong.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. And any further speakers? Mr. Ludwig?
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Good morning, Mr. Ludwig.
Mr. Ludwig, 6589 Rosemore Street, Squirrel Hall. Finding a subject was difficult this morning. I was glad to see that there were as many people here to see the proclamations that were done, but I am saddened by the fact that our television community seems to be ignoring Ed Ganey. We have a responsibility, in my view, to make this room come alive. And you'll say, well, look at all the activity of this morning. No, that's not the kind of activity that I'm talking about. I'm not talking about doing a week's work and picking up a check and going home and saying, there's no place for me. I can't say anything. I'm a small person, and there's nothing I can do to have an effect on my government. I, for one, said that that was a false premise in the first place, and I proceeded by myself to try and bring a difference. And I think I succeeded in 2003, although nobody bothered to note it. Therefore, there's a sore spot why people aren't rewarded, in other words, by recognition. So I ended up talking about a 2% club. What, 2% of what? 2% of any saving that was made on behalf of the city and payable for life. What was the idea behind it? Money. Money for people who wanted to make the suggestions that they couldn't, that they had the feeling that didn't exist. They didn't have the opportunity. We want to bring those people here. They are not to be lost. That's not part of democracy. Democracy is participation. Without participation, we failed to meet the definitions of our forefathers. So therefore, my point in coming today is to say, let's revive 2%. I don't know whether it even passed as a part of motions in the 2003 years, but it still applies. We're not living democracy. We're hiding from it.
Thank you, Mr. Ludwig. Are there any further speakers wishing to address City Council? Are there any further speakers? Seeing none, we'll now move on to our next order of business, which is presentation of papers. And we'll begin with Councilman Reverend Ricky Burgess on Chair of Urban Recreation.
New papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much.
He got one.
Oh, you do have one.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Councilman Coghill, I'm remote, so I can't see it on the table.
Thank you.
Councilman Reverend Burgess presents Bill Number 334, Communication from City Council to the Zoning Administrator, notifying the Planning Commission of Council's intent to extend the deadline for Council to hold a public hearing on Council Bill 2021-1913 relating to Affordable Housing Impact Statements.
Thank you. And Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number 335, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Directors of the Department of Public Works and the Department of Finance on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement with Peoples Natural Gas Company, LLC, to provide a license for relocated natural gas pipelines and necessary accessories within certain portions of Frick Park. Bill Number 336, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Maple Avenue Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $280,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at costs to the city of Pittsburgh. Further resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number 337, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Corley Street Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $352,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number 338, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Corley Street Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $252,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number 339, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Calera Street Bridge Project, Providing for Payment of Costs Not to Exceed $312,000. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number 340, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number 886, entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the 2022 Capitol Budget and the 2022 CDBG Program. of the Elizabeth Street Bridge Rehabilitation Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed Three Hundred and Fifty Two Thousand Dollars. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at a cost, at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number Three Thirty-eight, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Corley Street Bridge Project, Providing for the Payment of Costs Not to Exceed Two Hundred and Fifty Two Thousand Dollars. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number Three Thirty-nine, Resolution Providing for a Reimbursement Agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Preliminary Design Phase of the Calera Street Bridge Project, Providing for Payment of Costs Not to Exceed Three Hundred and Twelve Thousand Dollars. This resolution serves to authorize only the reimbursement agreement at no cost to the city. Future resolutions will authorize the project's specific service agreements. Bill Number Three Forty, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Eighty-six, Entitled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-two Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two CDBG Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-two through Two Thousand and Twenty-seven Capital Improvement Program by Increasing Elizabeth Street Bridge by Three Hundred and Fifty Two Thousand Dollars, Corley Street Bridge by Two Hundred and Fifty Two Thousand Dollars, Maple Avenue Bridge by Two Hundred and Eighty Thousand Dollars, and Calera Street Bridge by Three Hundred and Twelve Thousand Dollars.
Thank you. And Councilwoman Gross, Chair of Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Three Forty-one, Resolution Adopting Plan Revision to the City of Pittsburgh Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the North Shore Lot Ten Dot Two Project. Bill Number Three Forty-two, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Forty-two, Effective January tenth of two thousand and nineteen, as amended by Resolution Six Sixty-five, Effective October eleventh of two thousand and nineteen, to revise and increase the city of Pittsburgh's portion of the contract from Three Hundred and Twenty-One Thousand Seven Hundred Fifteen Dollars and Sixteen Cent to Three Hundred and Fifty-One Thousand Seven Hundred Fifteen Thousand Dollars and Sixteen Cent. Three Hundred and Fifty-One Thousand Seven Hundred Fifteen Dollars and Sixteen Cent for the Four Twelve Boulevard of the Allies Office Buildout. During the final phase of design, it was determined that there were layout changes needed by the user departments as well as structural drawings and calculations to be resolved before construction document can be completed. These services were not included in the original scope of work and once added, will increase the overall contract by a not-to-exceed additional fee of thirty thousand dollars.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Did you want to make a motion to waive rule aid for Bill Three Forty-two?
I appreciate I missed that, Madam President. A motion to waive the rules so that that bill might appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If you oppose, the bill will appear on tomorrow's Standing Committee agenda. Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Kraus, Chair of Human Resources.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilman Laval, Chair of Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. Hope everyone's well.
Thank you.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Three Forty-three, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of Flaherty Fardo Rogiel and Amick in the Amount of One Hundred Thousand Dollars, relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Case File in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas. Bill Number Three Forty-four, Resolution Authorizing the Issuing of a Warrant in Favor of O'Brien Coleman and Wright in the Amount of Thirty Thousand Dollars, relating to the Full and Final Settlement of a Litigation filed in the United States District Court for the Western District of Pennsylvania. Bill Number Three Forty-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the City Clerk on behalf of the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Max Gold Perl to conduct a statistical analysis of current voting patterns in the city at a cost not to exceed seven thousand seven hundred dollars.
Thank you. And Councilman O'Connor, Chair of Public Safety Services.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. And Councilwoman Strasburger, Chair of Innovation Performance and Asset Management.
No new papers, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Three Forty-six, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Six Oh Six, entitled, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance, and Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services and/or Data Collection Activities as Associated with the Two Thousand and Twenty Emergency Solution Grant, Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed One Million Two Hundred Sixteen Thousand One Hundred and Thirty-three Dollars and Two Thousand and Twenty Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS, Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed One Million One Hundred Forty Thousand Two Hundred and Ninety-two Dollars by Amending Various Emergency Solution Grant Line Items and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement.
Thank you. And my self, Chair of Hearings, I have three resolutions and one communications. Let's take the communications first and then the resolutions. Thank you.
Council President Kell Smith presents Bill Number Three Fifty, Communication from Michael Lamb, City Controller, and Tracy Rorston, Acting County Controller, Submitting a Special Joint Report on Tax Exempt Properties dated May of two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to read, receive, and file?
Submit.
Submit.
Second? Second?
Second.
Second.
Oh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I'm not sure. I have not talked to the Controller yet, and so I won't make the motion now. But I think it would be at some point, um, in Council's interests to have the Controller present this report to us in a very public way so that we can digest it, ask him questions. Again, I won't make, I'm not sure I'll make the motion today, but I do think, um, and I work with you as to when, I do think that we should, you know, um, have the Controller talk about his report of the large nonprofit institutions and their taxes and status and them voluntarily doing pilots. We need to, I think, be presented to the media. But I think there is a, I think it's important at some point that we have that public conversation with it. That's all.
Thank you, Reverend. Any other members? All right, we already approved it. And the, um, resolutions, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
Council President also presents Bill Number Three Forty-seven, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Nine Forty-eight, as amended, entitled, Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Four Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Four through Two Thousand and Nine Capital Improvement Program, so as to change the McGarland Railway Deliverable. Bill Number Three Forty-eight, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Six Seventy-five of Two Thousand and Eight, entitled, Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Nine Capital Budget and Approving the Two Thousand and Nine through Two Thousand and Thirteen Capital Improvement Program, so as to change the McGarland Railway Deliverables. Bill Number Three Forty-nine, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Eight Fifty-five, as amended, entitled, Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twelve Capital Budget and Approving the Two Thousand and Twelve through Two Thousand and Seventeen Capital Improvement Program, so as to change the McGarland Railway Deliverable.
Thank you. And our next order of business is unfinished business. Is there any unfinished business before Council?
Madam President?
Yes.
Yes, I have unfinished business. Today, I introduced Bill, um, Zero Three Three Four. It is a technical bill. I'm going to make a motion in a minute to receive, re-receiving file. We received unanimous approval of this bill from the Planning Commission. We have to hold a public hearing and then they'll come back to us for consideration. But because of waiting for a new planning director and this, the transition to new administration, um, we did not make the deadline for the holding of the public hearing. And so we need to extend the, the timeframe, simply to hold the public hearing. After that public hearing, it will come back to Council for its deliberation and hopefully approval. And so this is just, we as the applicant have the ability to do that, but we have to do that in a formal way. And so I introduce the bill today, but it does not have to be voted on. It can simply be, uh, read, received, and filed. So I want to make the motion that Bill Zero Three Three Four be read, received, read, received, and filed.
Second.
Can I just ask briefly? Did you have a chance to talk to our solicitor and make sure that that was the appropriate avenue?
Um, we've kind of done this before. We've done this like long.
I know, but I know we've done a lot of things before that weren't always appropriate. So I want to make sure we're doing everything appropriate. That's all.
Okay. If you want me to, I'll withdraw the motion, talk to him, and we'll have time to make sure that's the right thing to do. Okay?
Thank you. Thank you, Reverend. Is there any further unfinished business before Council? That said, we'll go on to our next order of business, which is the Reports of Committee for Final Action. We have Councilman Laval, Committee on Finance and Law.
Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman. You don't sound good.
Councilman Lavelle presents Bill Number Three Twenty-nine, Report of the Committee on Finance and Law for May Fourth of two thousand and twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Two Eighty-three, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Number Seven Nineteen, entitled, Providing for an Agreement or Use of Existing Agreement and/or Contracts for the Purchase of Materials, Supplies, Equipment, and/or Services for Various Projects in Connection with the Neighborhood Needs Program in Council District Four, and Providing for the Payment of Costs thereof by Transferring Funds Within District Four Neighborhood Needs to Volunteers Field and Seldom Seen Park. Bill Number Two Eighty-four, Resolution Further Amending Resolution and Supplementing Resolution Number Eight Fifty-five, entitled, Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twelve Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twelve through Two Thousand and Seventeen Capital Improvement Program by Transferring Funds Within District Four Neighborhood Needs to Volunteers Field Seldom Seen Park and Further Correcting the Name of an Existing Project. Bill Number Two Eighty-seven, Ordinance Amending and Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances Title II, Fiscal Article One, Administration, Chapter Two Eighteen, Capital Budget and Capital Improvement Plans by Revise in Section Two Eighteen Oh Two. Definitions, Two Eighteen Oh Four, Capital Program Facilitation Committee Process; Two Eighteen Oh Five, Project Authorization; and Two Eighteen Oh Eight, Project and Budget Reporting, so as to add Equity and Project Reddiness to Scoring and expand the City's Provisions for the Closure of Capital Project Account included as part of the City Controller's Annual Accounting Close and Report, so as to recycle Capital Funds faster. Bill Number Two Eighty-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Pittsburgh Futures for Professional Services relating to Leadership Development Training at a Sum Not to Exceed Twenty-Six Thousand Three Hundred and Thirty-six Dollars and for the Payment of Costs thereof. Bill Number Two Eighty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement with Resource X for Professional Services related to Priority-Based Budgeting for a Sum Not to Exceed One Hundred and Fifty Thousand Dollars over three years and for the Payment of Costs thereof.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of whatever the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle. Mr. O'Connor.
Sorry.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Anthony Coghill, Committee on Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number Three Thirty, Report of the Committee on Public Works for May Fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Two Seventy-eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of Public Works on behalf of the city to enter into an agreement or use of existing agreements for the Professional Landscape Architectural Services for Sheridan Park Phase One Design between the City and Clavlon Design Associates, Inc. The total not-to-exceed cost is three hundred thousand dollars. Bill Number Two Seventy-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Public Works to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for the Allegheny Riverfront Park Renovation Project. The grant proposal includes an ask of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars with a match of five hundred thousand dollars from the Pittsburgh Cultural Trust for a total project cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this stated purpose. Bill Number Two Eighty, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Apply for Grant Funding from the Pennsylvania Department of Conservation and Natural Resources Community Conservation Partnerships Program to Provide Funding for a Trail Condition Study. The granted proposal includes an ask of seventy-three thousand dollars with a total match of seventy-three thousand dollars to come out of the two thousand and nineteen City of Pittsburgh Capital Budget for a total project cost of one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for this stated purpose. Bill Number Two Eighty-one, Resolution Amending Resolution Number Five Eighty-two, entitled, Resolution Providing for an Agreement with the Pittsburgh Public Schools and West Penn Allegheny Health System, Inc., granting right of entry for foot traffic of staff and students unto licensed premises to PPS during designated times and dates, to add the Director of Finance to be an additional signatory for the execution of agreements that this resolution would authorize. Bill Number Two Eighty-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement or Use of Existing Agreements between the City and Lori Hepner for the Creation and Installation of Public Art as part of the New Davies Avenue Bridge at a Cost Not to Exceed Thirty Thousand Dollars. Bill Number Three Twenty-five, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility of Mobility and Infrastructure that the Concrete Portion of Foster Square be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section Four One Seven Oh Six of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill Number Three Twenty-six, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the Concrete Portion of Harbison Avenue be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section Four One Seven Oh Six of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances. Bill Number Three Twenty-seven, Resolution Approving the Recommendation Made by the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure that the Concrete Portion of Vinel Street be paved with asphalt in accordance with Section Four One Seven Oh Six of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of whatever the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to Councilman Kraus, Committee on Human Resources.
Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
Councilman Kraus presents Bill Number Three Thirty-one, Report of the Committee on Human Resources for May Fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Three Oh Seven, Resolution Amending Resolution One Eighteen, which authorize the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service and the Director of the Department of Innovation and Performance to enter into an amended professional services agreement and/or contracts with Severidian Human Capital Management, Inc. by changing a technical error below to reflect the current, the correct year.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of whatever the name is called? Those opposed will vote no. The clerk, please call the roll.
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Ms. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. And that moves us on to our next committee of the day, which is Councilman Wilson, Land, uh, Committee on Land Use and Economic Development. Thank you, Councilman.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Three Thirty-two, Report of the Committee on Land Use and Economic Development for May Fourth of two thousand and twenty-two with an affirmative recommendation. Bill Number Two Ninety, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh City Code Title VII, Business Licenses, Article Three, Chapter Seven Twenty-one and Seven Twenty-three, Article Nine and Title Ten, Building, Chapter One Thousand Four, Section One Oh Three Point Five Point One, To Simplify Legacy License Types. Bill Number Two Ninety-two, Ordinance Accepting a New Street Name Cedarwood Place in the Twenty-Eighth Ward of the City as per recommendation by the City of Pittsburgh Addressing Committee. The following street name was approved by SEPAK in February of two thousand and twenty-two. The name listed in this ordinance shall be made official in accordance with the Pittsburgh Code Title Four, Public Places and Property, Chapter Four Twenty, Uniform Street Naming and Addressing.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bills. Is there any discussion on the bills?
Madam Clerk, did I just?
Councilman?
I think I probably, I didn't.
That's okay. Councilman?
I just want to make a comment to the bill, just saying how, um, yeah, I think it's a good step forward.
a good step forward. I think, you know, PLI, a lot, you know, my office gets contacted about PLI, a lot trying to speed things up. So I think this allows, you know, by cutting down on these legacy licenses, it really, you know, lets PLI get to more property maintenance issues, and I think we all are in dire need of that. So I think this is a good step forward, and a good example of cutting some of this red tape, so thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. I just also wanted to say that while I had misgivings last week, even after PLI did a briefing, you know, so not only do they do their homework, they did a briefing for council members and staff, I had some questions at the table, but then Director Kinter and Director Pollak made time to talk to me yesterday, and we really had, I felt like a good debate about the upsides and downsides of retaining our business licensing jurisdiction, and weighing that against relying on zoning and building code jurisdictions, right? And so it made me more comfortable with this bill, but I just wanted to give them a special thanks for kind of indulging me in my, to make me more comfortable and, and make, helping me understand, kind of, not just these items that are being replaced in the code, but kind of their, their thoughts and directions moving forward. So I was really appreciative, and I'm supportive today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman? Is anybody else for first round? Councilman Wilson?
Yeah, I just wanted to break this down for the public. So I was trying to, you know, one of the, this is a bill that gets a bit wonky here, and it, you know, if you're the public, you may not want to read through the whole bill, but the takeaway is that, you know, this is, let me see, one, two, three, four, five, five, five different licenses or certification that's being deleted. So for instance, like a transient merchant license, you know, you can get a temporary occupancy for it now, instead of having to be required to go through the licensing process. Trade fairs license, you can either have the trade fair and a place is already certified to do that, an appropriate place, or you can get a temp occ as well. The, the mechanical amusement, we're not going to charge you for having a Pac-Man or a jukebox, sign maintenance certification, we're not going to charge you annual fee, annual fee to drive past the sign and give it the thumbs up if you have a sign on your business. So I think this is a good relief for a lot of people that work in this area.
Thank you, Councilman. Anything else from members? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, or if the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed, and that moves us on to Councilwoman Deborah Gross, Committee on Intergovernmental Affairs. Thank you, Councilwoman. It's our last committee of the day.
Councilwoman Gross presents bill number 333, reported to committee on Intergovernmental Affairs for May 4th of 2022, with an affirmative recommendation. Bill number 285, resolution adopting plan revision to the City of Pittsburgh's Official Sewer Facilities Plan for the 810 West North Avenue.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of the title of the bill. Is there any discussion on the bill? Seeing none, the bills are not ready for final action. All in favor of the passage, vote aye when the name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Reverend Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Kraus.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle.
Aye.
Mr. O'Connor.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mrs. Kell Smith, President.
Aye.
Nine ayes.
Thank you. The bills haven't received the legally required number of votes are finally passed. It's finally passed, it was one. That moves us on to our next order of business, which is motions, motions and resolutions. And I just have a few meeting announcements, and then we'll get to the members and see if you have anything you want to add. Tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., council will hold our standing committees meeting. Speaker registration will close at 9:00 a.m. Wednesday morning. To register to speak at this meeting, please fill out the sign-up form on the city, on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. Also, tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 p.m., council will hold interviews for the, for the directorships of the Department of, Departments of Public Works, Mobility and Infrastructure, and Parks and Recreation, as well as interviews for the members appointed to the Equipment Leasing Authority. Next, next week, due to the primary election, council will hold both of our regular meetings, our regular meeting and standing committee meetings on Monday, May 16th, at 10:00 a.m. and 1:30 p.m. respectively. On Tuesday, May 17th, at 1:30 p.m., council will hold a cable cast, public hearing on bill 235, as it relates to the historic designation of Rodolfo Shalom. Speaker registration closes at 12:00 noon on, on May 17th. And I want to be clear, Madam Clerk, it was because the notice was already mailed out, so we can't change that date, correct? Okay. And next Thursday, May 19th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Pride Project Incorporated, located on 227 Bonneview Street, council will hold another in-person only public hearing on the city's proposed annexation of Wilkinsburg. Speaker registration closes at 3:00 p.m. on May 19th. To register to speak at these public meeting, public hearings, please fill out the sign-up form on the council meeting webpage. You may also call the city clerk's office at 412-255-2138. And do we have anything from members? Councilman Coghill?
Missed, all right, could have asked you off camera too. The directors' interviews, were they in the morning, or?
They're coming. They're scheduled for Wednesday.
Tomorrow?
Yes, yes.
Okay. In the afternoon?
Oh, yeah, tomorrow afternoon at 1:30. Yeah, I'll read it again. Tomorrow afternoon at 1:30 p.m., council will hold interviews for the directorships of Departments of Public Works, Mobility and Infrastructure, and Parks and Recreation, as well as the appoint, the new appointees for the Equipment Leasing Authority. So there's two from the mayor. Anything else? Anything else from members? Seeing none, can I have a motion to excuse any absent members, approve the minutes, and adjourn the meeting? Thank you. All in favor? Any opposed? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you, everyone.